Hello.
Hello.
I am I'm a sort of a new girl here trying to figure out what I'm supposed to be doing and what's appropriate and what the format is and uh
Yeah. Well we'll start off by the seat but I'm not too too late.
Because there was a message that Ken is gonna show up, isn't there? I just saw.
But then Ken won't be.
No, he just spoke saying he is gonna be here.
Oh, he is going to be here.
I just happened to see it. So uh that means.
I mean we can normally sit around this table and quite frankly if there's nobody else here we wanna sit up.
We can just consider here, that's fine, that's fine.
It does it.
And look at the other meeting, I realised later, there were probably formalities. Everybody stood up to talk. Is that what one's supposed to have done?
No, no.
I sort of felt cramped when you sat there.
I would probably hit a leg cramp or something.
Well everybody else stood up and I thought well maybe there's a formality.
No.
And how should I appropriate so I just call you Rich? Is that how I know you?
Yeah, 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 everybody just barb.
And Luther and Ken and Mr. Piccarelli.
Yeah, and it could be Maddie sometimes comes.
Okay, okay.
Should be able to tell the difference.
I should be able to pick up a little bit of the brain. Uh I did look through some of the stuff but I'm expecting to I'm just learning a bit what needs to be done.
No.
Um Wendy suggested there's some courses. She said I should ask you guys if anything were worth taking. They will provide you with a state.
I haven't really been able to.
Hello folks.
Hello.
But I'll be guided by anybody who's uh.
Yeah, I mean if you're confused ask questions.
Oh don't worry, I will.
Then we'll confuse you more.
One good turn deserves another.
Perfect. Now I'm gonna shove him along. Shall I?
Yeah, you can push over there.
Now I need to slow you down. Is there a password and keys for Wi-Fi if you're using my computer?
Yeah, the Wi-Fi password is still back there.
What's that?
The Wi-Fi password.
I guess. Hey Neil, you're very good one.
It's something.
Very good.
I'll figure it out. I'll get it later. I probably don't need to be looking after it.
Yeah.
I don't know where it is to be honest with you.
It's something like Liberty one two three exclamation point.
Yes, so they knew you were coming. I knew you were coming because I thought you were missing.
B is not as covered as B three. So we can go a little campfire here.
Maybe you have a spare pen, do you think?
I can give you that.
Perfect. Thanks so much.
Bought about eight boxes. I don't know if you've got them or not.
Oh, no thanks actually. No, thanks.
Yeah, you want eighteen? We have some eighteen too. Or you just do twelve?
Usually twelve, but that's fine. Yeah, they've started really laying again.
I actually bought the one box.
Oh cool.
That's in my drawer.
Well it's coming up to Easter. They ought to be laying around Easter eggs.
That's right, that's right. They lay a lot of colour Easter eggs, so.
We got two minutes.
Well I'm gonna ask what I asked before you start. When Wendy said there might be some courses that peop that might be worth I mean I've got a lot to learn and if anybody has any ideas of these courses that are put on by the State of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, you can usually go to P SATS.
But the point is Wendy said she had no idea which might be relevant and I was asking if we got any ideas.
Um they they'll have courses for planning commission members.
Right.
Like they'll have courses for new to the planning commission. They'll have a course like that where it'll give you like a general layout.
Okay, so is there somewhere there might be a list of the different courses that are presented?
If you go yeah if you go to P SATS website, Pennsylvania um.
Uh it's the State Township Association.
Yeah. I just technically.
So can I just tell you what you said Pennsylvania?
State Township Association.
Township, okay.
Yeah. P A yeah Pennsylvania State Township Association.
So yeah, if you go to P SATS they'll have courses and then if anything the most we look at or the things we look at the most I should say is zoning and subdivision land development.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
And we don't do much with zoning because you have a zoning officer and stuff but it's good to understand it, you know.
Right.
Um we do more with the SAL though, the subdivision land development ordinance. Um but they'll they usually have courses for new members of planning commissions, you know, and then they'll they might have like they should have courses for zoning.
And they're wa I mean they're worth doing, I mean.
I went to one when I a workshop, I think it was a morning workshop where I first joined to sort of what are the planning commission's roles and responsibilities, which should they be and um.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Good of you. I don't really care.
I don't I don't think one of the anything I went to Wendy always looked and they always sent me the info so.
Well that's what I see.
I'm surprised I'm I'm surprised Wendy's saying NASCARs because she's one told me.
Yeah.
Right, but it's. Okay.
Yeah.
I mean it's it's yeah. I have to know, I just.
Cause if there's courses she gives announcements and she can have them on so.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. Thank you.
I guess we can. You got the whole barb?
Yep, ready to go, call it to order. Let's see. Uh Rich Luquette.
Here.
Luther Ridge.
Here.
Bar Rumber, Kenny Faribault.
Here.
Don Piccarelli.
Here.
And Beatrice.
Yes.
Yeah. Of course. And.
So did everybody have a chance for the minute for last meeting?
Most of them.
All in fact.
Alright.
Um I don't really have any comment. Barb, did you have anything you wanted to say as a public?
Yeah. Just listen in.
Okay. Um. So for old business, we got Southwest Joint Country that's planned. I mean last I heard from Wendy it we're still waiting for Rob Paylor to start something so there's nothing really going on with that. I she she said that you would be doing it soon but I haven't heard anything whatsoever so. And and there's within this set of notes that Wendy provided there's a notional scope of work of what it would look like but that was sent to each of the other municipalities and I don't know that they've all agreed to that. So until we meet again, there isn't a whole lot to say about that.
I think uh so many of our municipalities that I've talked to are sort of in the same boat. They haven't heard nothing from county yet, so.
Yeah. And the main drug was freedom because they used the plan for to help support their grant applications.
Yeah. They do, yep, and then they their zoning ordinance is done by counties. There's a lot of references to the comp plan so when they have issues they wanna see, yeah.
Okay, as far as the SAL though and zoning ordinance um that we're gonna review, we really didn't get the added information that I guess you put together until this morning.
Right.
Yeah.
Well.
I know you sent it before that.
Yes, yes, I did. Um I did have a meeting with Wendy and this morning and all and so we sent it to you and through our discussions there is some topics we do wanna look at, um reviewing all the uses and making sure during the zoning districts they can want them to be. Um and making sure we have all the uses as well. Uh the other thing was everything I gave um is just examples and some that you already have your ordinance like solar, you know, you already have. Some that you don't, short-term rentals. Um the very last one has to do with uh bitcoin mining or or I shouldn't call it that. Uh data center reflections. Some of it's your agritourism, you know, things like that. Uh what they would like us to do is almost each of you is take one topic instead of all of us all hitting all, you know, not saying don't look at anything else, but each of you is take one topic and sort of do your homework on that and then bring it all back here so we can start compiling everybody's notes and seeing everything. So to go over some of what I gave you is we've had the short-term rental was one part. Your agritourism, another part. Um now something like this, medical marijuana. You already have it but I know they've added um there's four uses within medical marijuana and I think you only have two or three uses so it's something small like that uh to do it. Uh solar. I brought in solar, I gave it I I know you have it and I know actually I think you guys sort of like what your solar is. The reason why I mentioned solar and just gave you another example of something which a lot of it will be saying is now you're starting to see them popping up, not near township yet, um but you're seeing them popping up. I highly suggest just take a ride to one of them and yeah and just look at one and go okay now imagine that getting picked up and putting across the street here.
Track them.
If there's something you don't like and you go oh I don't wanna see that or something, now that we can look at the ordinance and see if we're we're covering those bases, if you know. Cause what I'm noticing in some of these townships is they go oh we have solar, we're good. The solar farm comes and they go well I don't like this. Well that's we can run it separate and do it. So now that you're seeing them pop up and before they hit you, maybe go take a drive, look at one, it's already built or mostly built, um and then just sort of get an idea of that, you know, like that. What does it look like? Is that is there something we can do? We wanna make sure that we take care of X, Y and Z. Uh and then there's I think the I wanna change the definition of accessory solar energy system. Um and you know, there might be some small things that tighten up with that. Um another one was wireless and small wireless. I do not believe you have any issues with your wireless i.e. cell towers. However, small wireless, you don't have in your ordinance and you're probably never gonna get it out here but that's like the five G that in smaller towns like maybe Fairfield are putting them on top of light poles and stuff like that. So we don't have it at all. Do I think you're gonna get it? Probably not until you get some more condensed, you know.
That's true.
But if you're making changes you can easily slip that in. Uh and then the last one I gave was, this is from Shurban Township.
Mm-hmm.
They just adopted beginning of the month, I'm sorry, beginning of last month and then it has to do with the data centers and battery energy systems. It's the only one I know of. They did all the work, let's review it, massage it to your township because we know they're coming. Uh and then the other thing which I didn't bring anything is you probably wanna look at your warehouses. I don't think Liberty Township is the ideal location for one of these mega warehouses. You're not too close to the uh main access highway but you know they're popping out around places. You may wanna look at that section of your zoning ordinance and make sure that you're comfortable with it. Um and that was really about it. It's my understanding from them is there's some we'll call them hot topic issues that they wanna cover. We wanna hit it and make the changes and move on and then after that we'll probably go and look at the SAL though. SAL is really in pretty good shape but there are some tweaks that we'd like to make but they're not as important as making sure your your zoning is is front and centre.
Well considering the official correspondence we got from supervisors was the focus on short-term rentals. It seems to me that we ought to all focus on that and get that done. Because some of these I think they're all important but I don't think they have the same priority.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
No, no, I in accessory housing, short-term rentals was a they they stressed that to me. I even took a note of my things that that was something that they wanted us to to look at. And it's like like I said, I it's we were talking, we thought maybe try s you you want short-term rental, fine. You want solar, you want the you know, try to go it that way and we all come together.
Yeah.
Not saying that none of these can't can't or shouldn't work at all, but maybe try to focus in so we could get the ball moving and move it as fast as we could. Well, still given it the the time it needs. Um the other thing we talked about, we'd like to start zoning committee workshop or zoning committee. It's it could be all of you. I would suggest we hold it an hour before your regular planning commission meeting. So you hold at six thirty, there's no voting, nothing like that, no minutes, nothing. You're just a committee. You come in, it's basically all of you and if anybody else wants to join it. We just come in and talk about it. We don't have to take no notes. They're just all personal notes. We come in, we talk about it, we're not dealing with this, with that. I mean it's open but that's all it is, just talk about it and get it together.
This is the this is not expressly expressly permitted, is that the what you're referring to?
Oh no, no, I'm talking about when we start looking at these meetings.
Oh, when we start looking all all that.
Right. I'm suggesting we come in an hour before the regular scheduled meeting, meeting if you can make it, um as a zoning commit zoning workshop, committee workshop. Um and then this way we could it's not taking up happens is we get a plan in and next thing you know we're dealing with the plans and we're dealing with this and this tends to go to back burner because maybe there's other work. Right now there's not but um and then doesn't it yeah but I mean you know if you if you cancel your planning commission meeting because there's nothing on the agenda, that's fine, you can still come in, have this workshop committee and.
I I mean my personal feeling is I would not not take minutes but I think we should all take formal notes because otherwise you forget what you've.
Yeah, but they're personal notes, they're not.
Well, I mean you have a collective note.
It's a workshop, yeah.
I mean it's sort of like we do a brainstorming session, you've got a whole list of stuff that you can copy down and distribute so that everybody's working on the same page.
Yes, yeah. Right, and there's no no voting.
But it's not it's it's not like voting approved minutes from last meeting, it's just documenting your memory.
Right. Yep. So we just like to start coming in an hour early at six thirty. Again, if you can make it, I mean if then we can work on this uh on this topic.
Is is this something of a one-off or is this we do we try once, we track it?
It's it's a one-off. We we do it we'll do it like an hour before the planning commission meeting because then it's already on your gen your schedule somehow.
Sure. So you're saying for a couple times for the near future to do this?
Whatever they need to get to.
Right, for next two, three months or whatever it takes to get this finished.
Sure, yeah, okay. Yeah.
And again, we can just if there's no true planning commission meeting, we just keep working, you know. If you wanna say most people get tired at about two hours or an hour and a half, you know, we could get that in and every month and work on this stuff, do your homework at home, whatever that is. We can uh we'd probably knock it out fairly quick to order.
So Barb, is that something supervisors participate in?
Possibly. It depends upon my schedule. That's what.
I I don't mean necessarily all of you have to be here but my my.
Well it's like the planning commission, it's optional, that's for sure.
Yeah. But I I think that the last supervisor meeting, I pointed out, would be helpful if we were going off in the direction that the supervisors were really inclined to go that way. It would be good to get that feedback so that we're kind of on the same page all the time.
That kind of makes everybody.
And it doesn't mean all three supervisors would have to be here. If you have a sense that hey, I don't think the supervisor group wants to go this way to hear that.
Well and that helps everybody discuss smoother too, so.
Yeah.
That's something we should discuss and I'll I'll uh you're talking specifically workshop meeting and or vote.
Well, it would be a workshop. You'd have a you would have a zoning committee. You'd have a zoning committee and their workshop would be six thirty.
Six. Six thirty. Yeah.
Uh up until seven thirty when the planning commission starts.
That's what we need, yeah.
And then if there is no planning commission meeting that night, you know, like no plans came in, if they could go six thirty to whenever it was wanted, stop. I mean uh again, it's just it's a way to just not be worried about everything, taking notes.
Well, and that depends too on the topic and what we're trying to concentrate on too. I mean, you know, we all have our interests uh in certain specific areas, you know, depending and and that's why I'm here tonight, so.
Okay.
Just to listen in here, you know, so we can talk about it and come everybody, you know, for a moment, so.
So I guess the question is if you have a workshop, it'd have to be open to the public.
Um.
Advertise that way. I mean you're.
I I I know some townships, you don't have to talk to your solicitor, that say you don't have to have it open to the public. I guess I'm one of those people that says I don't I don't care if public comes in or not.
Oh, I don't care either.
Yeah.
Um you don't necessar I I think you don't have to advertise it like you do a typical planning commission meeting because it's just a workshop. You know, we can have them at one in the afternoon, it's just a workshop.
We're not making any recommendations or suggestions, right?
No decisions, no nothing.
No, yeah, you're not spending any money, you're not going anywhere.
Right, it's just all right.
As long as we have things like this, right, it's just the time.
Yeah, it's just it's just the way to right, get it get it done at one. Um and again, it's it's anybody could be on the committee.
We're all here anyway. Yeah.
One of you is to say I don't wanna be on and you could say I do want it. It's you're just a a committee, it's means nothing at all.
So that means I'm not in charge.
Someone should run it but it doesn't necessarily have to be you, right. There's no belt, there's no chair, there's nobody. We're all it's just a committee to discuss everything.
So do we wanna try that for the next meeting time?
That works.
Yeah, it just works for me.
Try it out, see how it goes.
Okay.
Okay.
And the top I would suggest the topic be the short-term rentals that we focus on.
Before the multifamily and the.
Well, I mean the the whole issue with those.
All three of those things were in that.
Yeah, all that, all those things that were in that memo. About the Airbnbs and the and this one had the sample you had I had RVs in there but I'm not sure we dealt with that with our camping.
Yeah, but again, it was just samples from the.
Which is.
RVs and tents.
Yeah, that was it's just samples from uh what's my called, from county and stuff. Cause we cause depending on you could see they have five different things. You don't necessarily need to worry about the RV hosting and tent hosting because you do have campground ordinance, etcetera.
Right.
Um and then as you can see, there's three ways. We we shouldn't and I have a bad habit of doing it. We shouldn't be calling them Airbnbs, you know, that's the difference between coke and soda.
Short-term rentals.
There's short-term rentals and you can have one of three and you might say we don't even care about having three of them. You can have the homestay, the short-term rental and the vacation rental. The homestay is um it's my house and I rent a room, even if it's Airbnb but it's my house, I rent a room. Short-term rental is um I own a house but I don't necessarily live there and I rent it out uh via Airbnb. And then the vacation rental is I own a house but I rent it out like a week or two weeks at a time, not necessarily just overnight, like a you know. So that's that's the quick version of the three of them. Uh and then you go back and there you know, there's just some things added on. Uh so that's what that is.
But then the type of that is the whole issue for accessory apartments.
Accessory apartments would be a different thing completely.
Well, but if somebody wants to rent and they wanna build an apartment in a garage, a detached garage.
There's nothing in here on that.
Then.
Right, and it right, they're they're willing because it's not a short-term rental. That's an accessory apartment which you or access yeah, accessory dwelling. And you already have some stuff in there. Um and I I know talking to the township, like I think it's your definition that says it has to be attached to the house. So if you already have a detached garage on your property and you wanna convert that, there's no means of doing that.
Mm-hmm.
So it's little tweaks like that that I think the the board would like to see made to the ordinance. You have stuff already in there, we just gotta tweak that stuff. That's why I wasn't pulling out and stuff.
Mm, okay. Okay, well so we can all take a good look at this piece here and also take a look at our ordinance. And then next time we all gather at six thirty or seven thirty.
Okay.
And see how that goes.
Generally speaking, whenever you whenever you're talking about supervisors wanting to look at this, is there a particular reason? Is there some kind of monetary aspect to it?
I I really don't know. Um it's more likely there's nothing in our ordinance, so it's an open ballgame. People do what they want. They don't get the permits, they make major improvements.
They don't go to tax.
What about ADA standards? You know, there's certain protections that we have to sit.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I'm here. I there's the sort of things that if you're having regular attendance in that garage, if you turn it into an apartment, there should be minimal things there, you know. You gotta have a toilet running, maybe a kitchenette, you know, those sort of things. There's obvious things that you need to rent it out to be safe because who knows what's gonna carry in there. It might be a barbecue grill. You know, so there's a lot of issues surrounding it and that's 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 major mine to make and and there's no annual inspections. You know, currently there's nobody to oversee that to make sure that it's safe for incoming people.
Yeah, the the county's worked that people to do that.
Yeah.
So, you know, th- those are the kind of things that I think about and see and.
I was I was thinking too that testing their water to make sure that it's not contaminated with.
Yeah, there's something you can wrap a lot of things into.
Yeah.
So who'd police this list?
Who who checks all these things to get it done?
We know. County, county, county can do inspections. Counties have the county has people that do that.
Mm-hmm.
So they would just have to get on the list and uh get on the schedule basically, that's what happens and they have their checklist.
Get on the list. Okay. Okay.
So do they have do they do that on a regular basis or is that whenever they apply uh for the permits?
I think that depends upon how it's written. It could be annual.
No, but I'm I'm talking about the county because there you're there you're talking about somebody that monitors it. I wasn't aware that they had it.
Yeah. I think county only does it once when you get a permit.
So it's gotta be an municipal.
Now you're 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 a zoning officer and or you're building code officer, if you re if we put in there. If you re- if we put in there every year you have to get a permit, then it falls onto them, 'cause it's gonna be.
So sometimes it's only every two years.
Right, whatever case I'm saying.
For getting a permit, I think it's every two years.
And um, actually, I think it's every three for apartments. I think it's every three. Um. But that's besides.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, it it just, it depends on how it's written, and then it depends on when you have to update your your permitting. Um, 'cause yeah, some of it, you you turn it into an apartment, you get the permit. So your building code officer is most likely gonna be the one making sure you're ADA compliant, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, either building code or something. And then if you say you have to renew it every year, or every two years, or every three years, then they'll probably do that again every, whenever they have to renew the permit.
Most likely, we're not gonna have that many of them in 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 the past.
Uh, not compared to Gettysburg, but I mean, you probably haven't won what you think.
Right, right. Uh-huh.
Oh, the short-term vacation rentals? I know three or four just on this road.
Yeah.
There's nine on Airbnb, if you check the list. In Liberty Township, there's nine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there?
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh, yes, in our ordinances, we have an ordinance that says that I rent from you, since you're the homeowner, you're supposed to pay Liberty twenty-five dollars a year fee for that privilege to rent the house in our township. There's rentals here, but we don't ever see a lick of it. And and twenty-five dollars is not an absorbent amount. However, you know, it's it's something we have to carry on the books and discuss and be concerned about. I I we're not trying to chase money, we're trying to uh uh, you know, we're we're not trying to create a a revenue getter, but you know, there's things that are already on the books, and I'm sure you're aware of a few of them, Dominic, within the county that, you know, we we don't even think about. Right. So, regarding this sort of stuff. Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, there's there's a lot of things. I just found out yesterday that if you are in Clean and Green and you put your house in the Airbnb, they automatically pick out Clean and Green. 'Cause you're no longer.
That would make sense.
Of course, right. But no one ever thinks that, and I've never been, all these years, I've never even heard of that.
And and that could, that could be the case in some of these.
Some of these, it could be the case. And and some of these, I think you need to let the people, I hate saying it this way.
Sure.
We might wanna be like, sort of letting people know. When they come in, they go, I'm the, even if we say you can do an Airbnb, or you can do a short-term rental. Um, they come in, go, oh, yeah.
'Cause they've turned it into a commercial, that's it.
Right, we may we may want that part of our checklist, just to say, are you in Clean and Green? Do you realize this is gonna happen to you? 'Cause that's seven years of taxes.
Yeah, I know.
So, that could, that could.
The ones that, I mean, they they make it very clear, not in commercial, no no money making, um.
Right. But I don't know if people necessarily think.
Think of just uh renting a, or cleaning it.
No, you can, there's gotta be agricultural related.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm in Clean and Green, and I remember reading the small print, but.
There is.
I mean, we do when when people are subdivided in lots and stuff like that, and that's a question we normally advise them, that they should double check with the.
Yeah, and county has that in in their letters and all, but.
So, so we don't, we don't give them advice, we just say, go check and make sure.
Mm-hmm.
So this is one more item that
Yeah.
Yep.
we just need to pick up on.
So, I mean, there any, we have some stuff.
Oh, I I have to talk about some of the places I can confirm without, I don't know, if the property's big enough to be in Clean and Green, so I don't know.
Well, most people that have over ten acres.
Yeah.
They they have it in there.
Oh, why don't we do?
Oh, yeah. And it's not saying they can't still have a short-term rental, they just have to jump through some extra hoops.
Right, right. Right.
You know, to make sure that they carve out the house and rest of it is ten acre, you know.
Make. Right.
Um, but, yeah.
So I I think as far as next month goes, probably the short-term rentals are gonna consume the time. Um, in the meantime, if everybody wants to take a look at the other issues and if there's something sticks out.
Okay.
I mean, I would probably look at the solar, because I did a lot of the drafting of what the current one is.
Okay.
Um.
Well, and the the other two specifically on residences, the multifamily dwellings and accessory dwellings, that really was a different issue. I mean, my understanding is for balancing with the whole idea of affordable housing and different options. And what do we need our zoning to cover, what do we need to achieve, and what do we need to consider?
And that's, yeah. And that's one thing that some people are looking at, is they're saying if we allow, now, it doubles your 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 I don't wanna say doubles your property, it doubles your ability to have twice as many homes per se. But if you allow everybody to have an accessory dwelling, that's one way to combat affordable housing, 'cause now all of a sudden, everybody can have two houses under.
Without a lot of extra buildings and space, you know.
Right. And that sounds like that would take care of their Clean and Green too.
Well, I mean, well, you have to see, right?
Yeah.
And and yeah, like if it's a, if it's a family member and there's no.
Right.
Blood relative, but.
Blood relatives. But they get covers of. Yeah, well, people are really, talk to attorneys, they don't wanna fight with his with his family. I mean, it it's, I I get what you're saying, if if, me and Rich knew each other since we were one years old and we grew up together and we said we're brothers, no one's ever gonna say we're not, just 'cause we don't share blood. It's it's a hard thing though.
But the other thing is, if you build, if you were given an apartment to build an accessory apartment and then detached garage for a family member and that family member either passed away, moved away, or whatever, you've spent a whole bunch of money on this living facility. You're gonna be tempted to try to find some other facility. And then all of a sudden, it's rental possibly.
Mm-hmm, you're exactly right.
And then how do you monitor that?
Well, it's not monitored currently, I'd say that.
Well, and but I don't know if it's easy to monitor. What, I mean, initially, when you give them the permit, you can do a lot of checking, but once that is done, I don't think you'd have the eyes out there to be able to detect what they're doing.
Unless you make money with their permit. Every so often.
Yeah.
That'd be one way to catch it.
Anyway, that's that's uh is there anything else that anybody has on that for right now? Okay. But I think the only other thing on the agenda I forget my computer from that. Is um, the proposed amendment for the uh anybody have a comment? I have one, but. My my comment is basically the um, proposed addition, which is that last piece that reference applies to the sole section right now. So they got the number wrong. It's gotta be three five oh four five eight, should be the new one. Oppose to four five seven.
Which?
Four five seven is the sole.
Oh, okay.
They were they were talking about adding section three fifty to four five seven.
Got it. Okay.
That already exists.
Okay. So it'll be four five eight.
So it should be four five eight. And I would add on to that, that they just started double checking all the references within the document to make sure that they're actually lined up the way they should be. I didn't see any problem with them, but it's worth double checking.
Yeah, 'cause that would be every single one.
Yeah, it's it's mentioned all through there. So for this, we should have a motion to recommend approval of the document with that change.
Yep.
And we can go motion.
I second that motion.
I didn't make the motion.
I was just saying.
He's in chair.
That was the first act and you blew it down.
But you can make, consider.
I made the motion, I can't crack up with the the wording, I had to crack wording to make the decision.
To to approve.
To approve the.
With with, we're we're recommending approval, we we don't approve.
Changes to the image. Of the amendments with the correction.
Recommending approval this to the to the supervisors.
Is that clear enough? I did.
We're recommending approval with.
Of of the change in the.
Barred, barbed words of the approval. Correct the the section reference.
Yep, it's a motion to recommend approval of the zoning ordinance amendment um with the correction uh from four fifty-seven to four fifty.
One second. Any further discussion? All fair?
I have.
Okay. Um, can I think?
I mean, I've got all kinds of comments, I've read through those forty-four pages, but I think those kinds of comments come into our discussion next week.
Yeah, but not all four, the the first like seven pages is what we're gonna talk about.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I happen to, I know.
You don't have to memorize all forty-four pages.
No, no, I know, I know, I know, all kinds of thoughts on some of the other things too, but um.
Good.
And if any of you wanna quick reference, um, if you go to Adams County's website, uh, go under Office of Planning and Development, um, I'm sorry, no, I'm wrong. Adams County website, go under Municipalities, it'll show all the municipalities in Adams County, boroughs and townships. And you click on whatever township, uh, and most of them, you can pull up their zoning ordinances and stuff. So you can see what other townships, not all of them, you can see what other townships are doing. Now, most of Adams County except for like Strabane, Gettysburg, Cumberland Township, they're they're all like Liberty Township, you're rural, you know. So you're gonna see a lot of, if you do, you'll see a lot of similarities from, especially if county's been working on these. Then you can also find counties zoning ordinance on the website as well. So if you just wanna compare and contrast what other places are doing, you you can see that.
Yep. And the county has a standard dwelling ordinance, so if we didn't have one, theirs wouldn't apply.
When you handed me the hard copy, I glanced through it a little bit this morning, yes.
But but it's online for the ti- letter of township, and and that's really searchable, which I find much better than that big name.
I know, I'm an old-fashioned person. I understand, I'm an old-fashioned, I'll just the hard copy, but anyway, I don't mean to digress.
And it's a lot less. If you put it on Google Drive, it's a lot lighter.
Now, just try. Let everybody know where you can find some resources pretty quickly.
You might have any other things that they needed to bring up, 'cause otherwise they can entertain a motion to adjourn. Why don't you do adjourn?
I second it.
Oh, okay.
Is somebody else seconded?
All fair.
If you agree to second that, we're.
Well, I I'm a little, I I'm shaking my neck out too far.